...cow to kiss him with her long tongue. Was that what baby wanted? Slurpala slopala, the cow slobbered on baby's chin. "Waaah!" said baby. "I know what baby wants," said uncle. Baby wants something to keep him warm. So uncle went out to the pasture and brought baby a flock of woolly sheep. Was that what baby wanted? Nibbity nibbity, the sheep nibbled on baby's hair. "Waaah!" said baby. "I know what baby wants," said big sister. Baby wants someone to sing him to sleep. So big sister went out to the forest and brought baby a tree full of birds. Was that what baby wanted?
No.
Towita, towita, the birds twittered in baby's ear. "Waaah!" said baby. Can you help me? "Waaah!" Come on, louder. Oh, you can do better than that. Come on, babies, let's have a big cry. "Oh dear," said grandma and grandpa, "and aunt, and uncle, and big sister. What does baby want?" "I think I know what baby wants," said little brother. Little brother picked baby up. He cuddled baby and kissed baby. He wrapped baby in his quilt and sang baby a soft little lullaby. Was that what baby wanted? Hushabye, shushabye, baby's eyes closed, baby's crying stopped. Just then Papa came home. "Is everything all right?" he asked. "Just fine," said grandma and grandpa and aunt and uncle and big sister and little brother. Mama's sleeping and we're taking care of baby. And they did, all night long. Okay, there you go. Well, thank you very much. This was Treehouse Tales from the Glendale Public Library. So be sure to come and see us at the library sometime. We have lots of good story programs and arts and crafts programs and, of course, lots of good books. So...
of Remembrance, April 18th through the 24th. A panel discussion focusing on man's inhumanity demand will be held on April 18th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Glendale Police Department Community Room. The event will feature a panel discussion and a video presentation related to atrocities suffered in Bosnia, Darfur, Rwanda, Cambodia, and Armenia. A blood drive will be held on April 22nd from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at St. Mary's Church. The one-day event is being put on in coordination with the American Red Cross. And the Armenian genocide will be the focus of an April 24th event at the Alex Theater. The event will run from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. The group Artists for Kids will present a variety of performances during the event, including music and a live projection presentation. These events are all free.
I'd like to call to order the April 17th, 2007, meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Council members Draymond...
Here.
Quintero...
Here.
Weaver...
Here.
Yusefian...
Here.
Mayor Najarian...
Here. May we have, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Colonel Rafi Najarian, who happens to be my younger brother. He's lieutenant colonel outside, but I outrank him in City Hall, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Would you please rise, face the flag, place your right hand over your heart, or render the appropriate salute if necessary, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now for the invocation. On April 15, 1947, in Ebbets Field in the heart of Brooklyn, New York, a young African-American born in Georgia and raised in Pasadena, California, took the field to play a simple game of baseball and shook the foundations of racist ideology in America forever. Jackie Robinson's legacy lives on wherever people are judged by their talents rather than the color of their skin or the ending of their last name. Robinson's legacy is one that acknowledges man's natural tendencies towards tribalism but strives to rise above them and raise others with them along the way. Tonight, let us pray to channel the very same spirit of determination and courage that watched over Jackie on the baseball field on April 15, 1947. Let us praise his work by honoring his words when he said, "I'm not concerned with your liking or disliking me. All I ask is that you respect me as a human being." Let us pray for all of our fellow human beings and their salvation from ignorance and bigotry. Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the April 17, 2007, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 12, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
And the next item?
Three is presentation and appointments. At 3A is agenda preview for the meeting of April 25, 2007.
And before we get to that, Mr. McFaul, Mr. Starbird, I'd like to go a little bit out of order. Due to the unexpected events of last night, I was unable to invite my family to see me sworn in as mayor. And I did ask them to come forward today to share this joyous moment. I hope it stays joyous, gentlemen, tonight. But nevertheless, I would like to introduce first my wife, Darlene. Darlene, stand up, please, and my sons, Christopher and my son Alexander. I also have, I also have my, fortunate to have my parents here, Dr. Vartus Najarian and my mom, Mary. Thank you for all your support. I have my sister Mauro Yakubian and her husband Steve Yakubian in the back with her young children, Daron and Vahé and Daniel, in the white shirts and the ties. This is their first visit to City Hall, so they're very excited. And a good family friend who came all the way from Detroit, Michigan, to be with us today. Well, not just to be with us today, but to be here in Glendale, Mr. Arsene Sanjen. Thank you for coming, Arsene. And I think that's it for the family members. But Darlene, would you come forward, please?
It'll be okay.
No, no, keep Margaret away from you. You'll beat me up. It is, ladies and gentlemen, it is very tough on the family when you are a member of council, when you're running for election, and as I understand, when you are serving as mayor. That's what my colleagues tell me. So I'd like to thank you in advance for your cooperation and courtesy, Darlene.
Oh, that's sweet. Wow. This is the first time I've ever had flowers. No, it happens every week. Every Tuesday morning.
Darlene, all I can tell you is that's not enough, considering what you have to go through. So the word Louis Vuitton, remember that.
You're out of order, Mr. Yusefian. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for indulging me on that. Now let's return to the agenda, the regularly scheduled agenda, item 3A, which is the agenda preview.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tragically, your comment, though, just echoes the comment you made last night that said that was exactly what Darlene was going to say. Okay, let me move on to next week's preview. April 24th, first, there's going to be a little bit of following the bouncing ball this evening. On April 24th is traditionally the date that the city of Glendale and the community commemorates and participates in a number of activities that commemorate the events of the Armenian genocide. In recognition of that, the city council has taken actions to reschedule meetings that would normally occur on the 24th. So the housing authority that normally meets on the 24th, as a result of there being no scheduled business, will be rescheduled until the actual next normal meeting date, Tuesday, May 1st. The Glendale Redevelopment Agency has been rescheduled to the following day, Wednesday, April 25th. The city council evening, the city council meeting that would normally be held on April 24th will be held the following day also on April 25th, and there are a number of action items the council will be considering. The first, the Director of Parks and Recreation will be presenting the design for Glendale's entry in the year 2008 Pasadena Tournament of Roses Parade. Secondly, the Acting Director of Administrative Services will be providing, for council consideration, adjustments to the adopted, already adopted, 2006-2007 budget. Next, the Director of Information Services and the Director of Water and Power will be submitting a report considering the installation of a T-Mobile antenna, cellphone antenna, on a Glendale water tank located on Glen Oaks Boulevard. Next, the city attorney will be presenting a report on public contracting bonds and insurance and prevailing wage requirements, in particular for contractors that are bidding city projects. The Acting Director of Planning will be submitting a report regarding the approval of a track map for a town center. And then lastly, the city attorney will be submitting a report regarding airport commissioner appointments. That would be it.
Thank you. The next item, please.
At 3B is a proclamation designating April 18th through the 25th, 2007, as Week of Remembrance and April 24, 2007, as Armenian Genocide Commemoration Day.
Thank you. As I read this proclamation commemorating Armenian genocide day, would the members of the groups, please come forward and I'll hand the proclamations to you after I finish reading this.
Whereas Glendale believes that cultural diversity is achieved when our entire community acknowledges that its wholeness is based on the unique strengths of each of its community members, and whereas the American-Armenian community has participated in and greatly enriched our city through contributions in business, arts, culture, education, and government, and whereas each year Armenians throughout the world honor those who perished from 1915 to 1923, and since Armenians lost 1.5 million family members and their ancestral homeland in the genocide, the hurt is deep, and we look forward to a time when the tragedy will be universally acknowledged. And whereas the denial of the Armenian genocide by the present-day Turkish government continues to antagonize the Armenian people concerning their own rightful place in history, and whereas we appreciate the efforts of the Glendale Unified School District and the Glendale Community College in educating our youth regarding the Armenian genocide, and whereas the city appreciates the efforts of community volunteers for organizing the Week of Remembrance events to commemorate man's inhumanity to man and recognizing April 24th as Armenian genocide commemoration day, and urge our representatives and elected officials in Washington, D.C., to do the same. Now therefore, I, Arna Najarian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim April 18th to 24th, 2007, as the Week of Remembrance, and April 24th, 2007, as Armenian genocide commemoration day.
And as I pass these out, would you please introduce yourself to the audience and to the council and say a few words about the events that we're having this week?
I'm Ara Aharonian, Honorable Mayor, honorable council members. It was a pleasure for the past six years to work with each one of you on behalf of the Armenian community in Glendale and to organize a Week of Remembrance. And as years go by, we have always something new, something new to say, and we, of course, congratulate every member that has supported us through the city of Glendale in order to have this Week of Remembrance, which starts tomorrow on April 18th and throughout the whole week till next Tuesday, or 24th. Thank you very much again, Mr. Najarian, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Aharonian.
Hello, my name is Ellen Isatriam. I'm with Armenian National Committee, Glendale Chapter, and I'd like to thank each and every one of you for taking the initiative to bring the community together for a Week of Remembrance. And I'd like to make the point that this week was not just for the Armenian-American community, but all residents of Glendale, and that is why there is the Man's in Humanity to Man event. I'd also like to emphasize on the blood drive, which will be taking place on Sunday, April 22nd, from 11:00 to 5:00 p.m. at St. Mary's Armenian Church, and I believe it's on the poster that you all have in front of you. Thank you so much again.
Thank you, Ellen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Zaram Alajjadian. I'm here on behalf of a nonprofit organization called Artists for Kids. This is an organization worldwide that includes a number of artists, not only in the United States, and also around the world. We came together, actually, to help to put this program, especially the evening of April 24th, the musical events. We invited a number of artists and musicians that will be performing. As you know, there is a week-long program starting from tomorrow, Man's in Humanity to Man, from Police Community Room, 6:00 p.m., and there's blood drive, as has been mentioned before, on Sunday, April 22nd, and the program will be concluded Tuesday, April 24th. I will ask all of you, I will invite the entire community to be there at the Alex Theater. We certainly appreciate participation of the city staff, the Alex Theater staff, everybody who contributed, the time, the volunteers from Artists for Kids, they spent hours and hours, and all the artists that voluntarily will come along, they're world-famous singers, artists, musicians that will participate at this event. So I really like to invite the community to come and join us that evening of commemoration, and I really appreciate this, and I'd like to say that, you know, the Artists for Kids or all of us are committed for the quality of events and the events that are happening in Glendale, to see it happening successfully. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to recap, tomorrow, in the Police Community Room, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., we're having a Man's in Humanity to Man Remembrance. And this is not solely the Armenian genocide. It deals with many different genocides, including comments on the most recent genocide in Darfur. On Sunday, April 22nd, at St. Mary's Church, from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., we have the blood drive, with all the blood being given to the American Red Cross. And on Tuesday, April 24th, which is the highlight event, it's the Armenian genocide commemoration, 6:30 p.m. at the Alex, free parking at the Orange Street Garage, and it will certainly be a riveting event. So thank you, everyone, thank you, the committee, thank you, Zizet, for working so hard. Thank you, Mr. Yusefian, for working so hard with the group and bringing it along, and it certainly is going to be an excellent series of events. Thank you very much. Okay. The next item printed on the agenda is the city council staff comments. However, in accordance with our previous practice, we are going to move that portion of the agenda until after item 6, oral communications. So therefore, Mr. Kasakian, what would be next?
Mr. Mayor and council, the next items include minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. Two cards were submitted.
Mr. Starbird?
Mr. Mayor, in addition to any card request you have for pulling items, we'd like to take item 5D off of consent for a brief report. D is in dog, that's the Atom Square Library.
I'll move the rest of the consent. And I do have, in addition, I do have a request to pull item 5B and 5G. So if you would like to move the calendar with the exception of 5B, 5D, and 5G... So moved. Motion and a second.
I believe Councilmember Draymond will have to abstain from the minutes.
Yes. Okay. 5A abstention. And may we have the roll call, please, for abstention for Mr. Draymond on 5A.
Councilmembers Draymond...
Abstain.
That would be abstain on 5A, the rest of the consent calendar, you can certainly vote on that.
Just on the minutes.
Right. Okay. Aye on the rest?
Yes.
Aye. Councilmember Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Let's go to 5B.
5B is Police Chief regarding Glendale Unified School District's Yusuf Community Family Counseling Center at the Glendale Police Department. 5B1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute agreement with Glendale Unified School District.
And I have a speaker on that card, Dr. Richard Espiritu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff, and the general public. My name is Dr. Richard Espiritu. I'd like to say that this is probably the most, one of the very important items that I'm concerned about because it's talking about 300 children who are at high risk. These children have domestic violence, substance abuse, and child abuse. However, I have a little problem with the written presentation on this. Due to the fact that there's an increase of the cost to the counselors from $14 to $16, is the police department asking for more money from the school district? What are we talking about? That's really my only question. And I would also like to congratulate the Glendale Police Department on two issues. One, they've completed their ADA sensitivity training, and I contacted the police department and gave them accommodations for three officers who did an outstanding job for a lady who was at Windsor Manor. And I also would like to hope that Glendale's finest will do great in the Baker Vegas run, and due to the fact that my son's going to run against them, I would like John Balin, who is our Public Information Officer, to run leg eight with my son, that's a seven-mile run all uphill. And I would like to know what we're doing with, are we really asking for more money or what? Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get an answer to that question briefly?
Ron, Assistant Chief de Pampa?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a longstanding contract that we've had with the school district where we provide counseling services through our family counseling service, and the rates have been fixed for many years now, and this particular contract does not include any increase in those rates. It's a standard flat-rate fee that we charge the school district in order to provide that counseling service.
I think the information in the staff report about the wages is just background information for the most part.
That's correct.
So this is really approving that contract?
Mr. Yusefian?
Move 5B.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmember Draymond?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Thank you. Let's move on to item 5D.
Mr. Mayor, I thought in as much as this project, which is the Atom Square, it's called Satellite Library, or as I like to call it, a mini branch, it has been of such interest in the community, I thought we...
who did an outstanding job for a lady who was at Windsor Manor. And I also would like to hope that Glendale's finest will do great in the Baker Vegas run. And due to the fact that my son's going to run against them, I would like John Balin, who is our Public Information Officer, to run leg eight with my son. That's a seven-mile run all uphill. And I would like to know what we're doing with, are we really asking for more money or what? Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get an answer to that question briefly?
Yeah. Ron, Assistant Chief de Pampa?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a longstanding contract that we've had with the school district, where we provide counseling services through our family counseling service. And the rates have been fixed for many years now. And this particular contract does not include any increase in those rates. It's a standard flat-rate fee that we charge the school district in order to provide that counseling service.
I think the information in the staff report about the wages is just background information for the most part.
That's correct.
So this is really approving that contract.
Mr. Yusefian.
Move 5B.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's move on to Item 5D.
Mr. Mayor, I thought in as much as this project, which is the Adam Square, it's called Satellite Library, or as I like to call it, a mini-branch. It has been of such interest in the community, I thought we might take just a moment and have Nancy Hunt Coffey, Director of Libraries, give you a brief status report on this.
While she's preparing, we can read into the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun.
5D is Director of Public Works regarding bids received for construction of the Glendale Satellite Library Tenant Improvement Project, Spec. No. 3220. D1 is motion awarding construction contract to Electro Construction Corp. an amount of $508,671, plus contingency, and directing the city clerk to reject all other bids.
Thank you. Ms. Hunt?
Very good. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, city staff, just to give a little background for the folks at home who may not know as much about this project, we will be opening a storefront library in the historic Adam Square Building, in an area of town that is in desperate need of library service. And we have a picture of the library here. I'm sorry, I did load the picture here on the desktop, but it doesn't seem to be there anymore. So I apologize to the folks at home. The idea behind the storefront library is to lease a space, rather than building it from scratch, so that we can get library service up and running very quickly. So with council's assistance, and also with the wonderful help from community development, we were able to pull together capital improvement funds, community development block grant funds, as well as workforce housing funds to embark on this project. We pulled those together mid-year. And we engaged the services of Osborne, an architectural firm that's local here in Glendale, to help us go through the design development process, develop our cost estimates, and develop our program of service. We'll see if we can get a picture. There we are. So this is the Adam Square Building. Many of you may be familiar with it. We wanted to share the picture with you, so that the folks at home would know the area of town that we're talking about. Tonight, I am joined by a number of folks from different departments in the city, but I'm going to ask Pat Shea from Public Works to come up and talk about the process we've just gone through to get bids for the project, and how we're going to move forward.
Well, this was an interesting project, because we had a number of contractors that came to the job walk and were interested in it. We actually had seven bidders turn up on the final bidding element. And all of them are quality contractors, so that was the great thing about putting this project out to bid at this time. The project is not complex, but it is in an existing structure that is owned by National Legal Services. And so there is some element of things that we may be coming across as we get into the building, but it should be about a four-month project. And we're just delighted that we've gotten a good contractor, that did the lowest bid, Electro Construction. We hope you award it tonight. Do you have any questions?
Did you mention the estimated completion time?
The completion time would be around the end of September. And then there'd be a move-in time for the library to move in, so probably around the end of October.
Okay. Get ready, everyone. It's coming. Any questions?
No cards.
I don't, I do not have a card on 5D.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move 5D.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item that is pulled is Item 5G. Would you read that in, please?
Item 5G is Director of Public Works Regarding Report of Bids Received for Allen Avenue's Street and Storm Drain Improvements and Sidewalk Construction at Various Locations, Spec. No. 3210. At G1 is motion awarding a construction contract to Pulp Inc., Excel Paving Company, an amount of $258,810, and rejecting all other bids.
Thank you. I have a card, Dr. Richard Espiritu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and Staff. I am Dr. Richard Espiritu. I would like to commend Mr. Zern for this outstanding report, because it's dealing with the Americans with Disability Act. We're talking about curb cuts, sidewalks, which I had talked about in the past. There's a lot of issues here that are outstanding. However, there is one little issue that I'd like to bring up. Last week, in the CBDG Block Grant Program, there was a issue here about the West Glendale ADA curb cuts, which says, "Construction of sidewalks, curb ramps, replacement of damaged sidewalks," for $125,000. I understand that that grant was given, and now we're paying another $258,810 to another company. How much of that block grant money is going to be assigned to this? Or is some of this money going to be reduced because of the block grant money that's being used in that area? Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your question, Dr. Espiritu, and Mr. Zern.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the funds that Dr. Espiritu refers to from the CBDG program are not associated with this project. They are associated with another sidewalk project, albeit Allen is in that one that we mentioned for the CBDG program. It is another stretch of Allen. The Allen portion of this project is to finalize the closure and cul-de-sac-ing of that particular street off of San Fernando, where we have, many years ago, closed that, and to enhance the rail-crossing safety aspect of that. So this is a separate project. Those funds will be utilized in an upcoming sidewalk repair program, in which another portion of Allen will be included.
Thank you.
Move 5G.
Second.
Motion and a second, with no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Yusefian?
Aye.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
The next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to a speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. City Manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Thank you. I have several requests for priority this evening. The first is Greg Krikorian.
Well, thank you, Mayor Najarian, and council members. Appreciate you giving me this opportunity. And being President of the Board of Education gives me great pleasure to be here today. But also, I wanted to save a stamp to personally send each of you. I sent each of you a letter addressed to Dr. ...I mean, to Mayor Najarian regarding comments I have for the city council. And already, you have copies for me, for each of them to have. With the election behind us, my focus and commitment remain with Glendale's school responsibilities and the city of Glendale. We are committed to open communication and are sensitive to needs of all populations within our wonderful city. My congratulations to newly-elected Councilman John Drayman. Congratulations, John. Really looking forward to working with you and counting on your support in the schools. And also to re-elected Dave Weaver. Congratulations, Dave. Wish you all the best and the continued support of our city, and to work with our school board. And most importantly, congratulations to our new mayor, Ada Najarian. I wish you Godspeed and good vision, and to be able to work with the Board of Education. As we unfold to the next chapter, we saw many challenges throughout this election process, and many concerns in our city that we need to address as a team, as a Board of Education, along with the city council, to work together to help build more communication for our children, for our families, and for our schools, and for our businesses. And we work together with local entities and local governments. We could work together, along with our Glendale College Board, and serve our community. The events in the tragedy in Virginia Tech campus led me to this immediate response to come to you. We need to work together to address the safety needs, security, not only of our public schools, but of our community campuses. So it's important that we communicate together as elected bodies to serve our communities. And that's why I'm here, as behalf of the Board of Education, and President of the Board of Education. So I ask for a joint meeting to take place with Mayor Najarian, City Manager Jim Starbird, Dr. Michael Escalante, the Superintendent, and myself, the President of the Board of Education, and possibly the College Board, to communicate together, to think of creative ways to protect our children and our families across Glendale and La Cressena. And I think this is a mindset we need to do, is we, as elected officials in this city, need to work together and communicate. And I'm here, standing before you, not only as a constituent, but as an elected official with you. And again, I can't echo enough the importance that we do work together on all issues, and I welcome your support in this upcoming year. God bless you, and thank you for this opportunity.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian?
Thank you very much for coming, Greg. I understand that you have a lot of other things to do, so I appreciate it. And congratulations also for you getting elected as the school board president. One thing that, now that you have given us the opportunity, I just wanted to use this opportunity to also let you know some of the issues that have come to us about Glendale High School, and car park, and the street over there. And I think that may be an issue that you may want to look at, especially the back door of the school is pretty much open, wide open, and which gives some people opportunities to do, to get to some mischiefs. So I hope you will take that back and work with the staff and Mr. Najarian to resolve some of that issues.
Yeah, we're aware of that. I think Mr. Starbird and Dr. Escalante have had a great relationship. And I know the last time we had a joint meeting together with both boards together was the year you were mayor, and I was president. I welcome that opportunity again, to where both of us could address issues together. Thank you.
We will, at the risk of getting the ire of our city attorney, we can discuss that, Mr. Yusefian, and perhaps invite you in on the meeting, and we can fully expand that at the appropriate time.
But congratulations, everybody, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
And you're welcome to come to our school board meetings anytime you want. But thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Paula Devine.
Yes. Important. Mayor Najarian, City Council and staff, my name is Paula Devine, and I'm here tonight representing the Committee for Relay for Life. Relay for Life is a community gathering where everyone can participate in the fight against cancer. One in three Americans will be diagnosed with cancer in their lifetime. Every three minutes, a woman is diagnosed with breast cancer, and every 12 minutes, a woman dies. Relay for Life represents the hope that those lost to cancer will never be forgotten, that those who face cancer will be supported, and that one day, cancer will be eliminated. We are about to embark on our Relay for Life 2007, and now Harold Scoggins, Chief Deputy, will tell us about that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. It's my pleasure once again to come before you and welcome you to this year's Relay for Life kickoff. We're doing that event May the 2nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Alex Theater. It's going to be filled with a lot of information, and people can come there, get in, just get involved in many different levels of the event. When you come that evening, there'll be food, and there'll be entertainment, and all those things will be going on. But most of all, you'll be given a lot of information about cancer, and the fight that's taking place against cancer, and the local fight that's going on here in the city of Glendale. And it's just, we're going to talk about our efforts from the past few years, and this is going to be our fourth Relay for Life. And this year's event is September 29th and 30th, once again, from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. at the Glendale Sports Complex. So we welcome you to come out to the Alex Theater on May the 2nd, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the evening. We hope to see you there.
I'd just like to add that today, I spent four hours at the City of Hope, and I met a woman who was about to lose her husband, 35-years-old, to cancer. And last year, she lost another son, also 35 at the time, to cancer. We need to find a cure, and we need to work towards that. So I ask all of the community to get involved, to come to the kickoff, to join a team, make a team, donate, sponsor, get involved in any way that you can. And Mayor Najarian, I know that you were a big influence, and Councilman Yusefian, in our past relays, and we've been so successful, and we hope that we have all of your support this year. Thank you.
And he's the honorary chair, right?
Yes, he is. Honorary Chair.
I didn't get that memo yet.
Najarian. Goes without saying, sir.
I'd be delighted to. It is the most worthwhile event that the city of Glendale is involved with. And Paula, you have, you work tirelessly, year-round. Not only do you bring in the most amount of money, year after year, but you put your hard work in the organization, and the setup, and the production of it. So we thank you very much.
I do. We share in that.
Thank you.
Did you want me to do that?
I'm sorry.
Did you want me to just say?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay. All right. Thank you, Harold. Okay. I'm also here representing the Commission on the Status of Women. And as most of us should know, or will know after this, that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. We are proud, the Commission, to partner with the YWCA in a few programs this coming week. April 25th, we will have our Ninth Annual Denim Day. And on this day, we raise awareness of the myths associated with sexual assault. It is, there is no excuse, and there is never an invitation to rape. If you would like to participate, what you have to do, very simple, wear denim and jeans on April 25th. The reason that we do that is because in 1999, an Italian court decision overturned a conviction of rape because the victim wore jeans. The justices stated that the victim must have helped her attacker remove the jeans. Therefore, she was giving consent. People were outraged, and from that was born Denim Day. Wearing jeans becomes, became, I'm sorry, an international symbol of protest against erroneous and destructive attitudes about sexual assault. So on April 25th, please, everyone, men, women, children, wear denim that day, and show your support for victims of sexual assault. On April 27th, the Commission is also partnering with the Y, and we are going to do our Take Back the Night March from City Hall to the YWCA. We will have registration at 4:30. Everyone will get a complimentary T-shirt. And then we will proceed to march from City Hall to the Y, where we will witness the Clothesline Project. And this is where victims of sexual assault have decorated and written on T-shirts and denims, jeans. And it's a visual display that calls attention to violence. It's very moving. It really brings awareness of the issue. With the T-shirts side by side, we must break the silence on sexual assault. So please support, I ask the community to support both Denim Day on the 25th, and please come down to City Hall on the 27th. We will have some food, and there will be a reception at the Y, starts at 4:30 to 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. The next speaker is Vanessa Milano.
Good evening, City Council members. First, I'd just like to congratulate John Drayman for winning a seat on the City Council, and also congratulate our new mayor. And as you said yesterday, Mr. Najarian, you said how you were proud of being the mayor of such a great city. And we all know that it's one of the safest cities in America. And I realize that, as a government, you guys take pride in this fact, that we have this safety, and that the people in Glendale are safe from gangs, criminals, and other dangerous people. But when we consider safety, we're overlooking a very important factor. We are not considering a very common and hidden danger, danger that accounts for hundreds of deaths annually, which, hundreds of thousands of deaths annually, and which translates into about 400 deaths in our city per year. But this can all be prevented, because the people that cause these deaths are not criminals or reckless drivers, but they are the victims themselves. And this danger that I'm talking about is trans fat. It's a health threat that can be easily mitigated, and trans fat is one of the major causes of heart disease. It is the most harmful kind of fat, as it raises LDL, or bad cholesterol, and lowers HDL, or good cholesterol. It is so detrimental to heart health that the Food and Drug Administration advises people to limit its intake to no more than 1% of their daily consumption of calories, or that would be about two grams. or that would be about two grams. But how can we do that if trans fat is common, not only in all of our fast food restaurants, but in most of our more expensive restaurants? Trans fat can be found in anything from french fries, which have about eight grams per serving, which is four times the recommended daily value. And also even chicken alfredo or a lot of things that you wouldn't realize, like margarine. And those are commonly about like three grams per serving. And so what I'm proposing is an ordinance to ban this ingredient in our restaurants and this ingredient is simply not needed because there are many other common alternatives such as olive oil, coconut oil and vegetable oil. And New York City has already implemented this ordinance and the restaurants there, they haven't suffered any major financial losses. So there haven't really been any major setbacks and it can greatly improve the health of our city. And as you said in your speech yesterday, Mr. Najarian, that we're going to be moving forward as a city and you said that we're going to be a premier city. And what better way to move forward than to positively impact the well-being of Glendale's residents? And if we work, if we work together to remove this health threat, we will truly be a premier city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker, Igumno Valery.
Good evening. My name is Mary Miller and I'm the literacy coordinator at the Glendale Public Library. I'm here to introduce our student in the literacy department. This is National Library Week and Mr. Mr. Gubnoff has decided that he'd like to share with you what he feels about the library.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I would like to share my experience with you about how the Glendale Library helped me to get accustomed in America. I have found it difficult for immigrants such as myself to adapt to such a drastic transitions. Some of the hardships that I had to face were not being able to speak English and having a bad knowledge of rules and customs. For the young generations, it's easy to familiarize themselves with a new way of life. They have more advantages such as school and computers. It's not the same for us adults though. When we were young, we didn't have things such as computers or even TV. All we had were books. That is why the first place we went to in Glendale was the library. Before I came to the United States, States, sorry, I worked in many university and public libraries in Russia, Germany and France. In some of them, the materials sometimes were better than in American libraries. But nothing comes close to the libraries in the United States when we are speaking about the convenience of dealing with books and different types of services. Here, I attend English class, read many magazines and newspapers, which I cannot afford to receive at home, get to watch movies for free and also take trips to places such as the Getty Center. We even had a police education class and took a trip to Glendale Police Department with Sergeant Palmer. These are the reasons why I liked the Glendale Library and why it became my second home. I want to give thanks to all the library staff, to Mary Miller and Sony Rivera from the literacy department, to my dear teachers, Joe Miller, Lisa Hamphrey, Christine Kraus and Michelle Laudermilk. They have great passions and great knowledge in a large variety of things, from English and history to modern politics. Once again, allow me to thank all of them for everything that they have done for me and everyone else. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Your English is very well and that's a tribute to your teachers, I'm sure, and your hard efforts.
Sorry for my English.
Thank you. No, it's very well.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Pam Cook.
I'd like to thank the council for this opportunity to come here tonight and talk about a program that I am honored to coordinate for Parks and Recreation. I'm, I'm here to invite city council members to attend our department's Club Maple 18th Anniversary Party next Thursday, April 26th, at the Civic Auditorium. Club Maple is a recreational, social, educational, fitness and sports program for developmentally-disabled teens, adults and seniors. Last year's anniversary was Starry, Starry Night at the Civic Auditorium, senior prom. Since many of these developmentally-disabled adults never got to attend their senior prom, we had one for them, complete with prom pictures and corsages and boutonnieres. We have wonderful field trips. Here's one at Disneyland. We have also introduced this year some wonderful educational guests, like our police department came by and talked to them about what they do and they all got to get in the car and turn on the lights. And our wonderful fire department also did a wonderful presentation from them at Maple Park. And of course, we have holiday celebrations. There was another Club Maple trip at Disneyland. They're all given shirts and pins and hats so they can all be identified. And of course, our holiday celebrations do bring out the strangest guests.
There's a guy in the middle.
This year, our-
The ears are missing.
What? Yeah. And this year, the anniversary is the 18th anniversary and we're having a 1950's sock hop, complete with a rock and roll band, food from In-N-Out. And in preparation for the sock hop theme next Thursday, everyone last Thursday got to have their picture taken by a classic 1957 Chevy owned by somebody in this room. And all Club Maplers are going to have their pictures printed on a T-shirt to wear with jeans or poodle skirt next week. So again, I invite you, any of the council members, to join us next Thursday at the Civic Auditorium for our 1950's sock hop. And anyone in the listening audience interested in more information on Club Maple or, or want to volunteer to be an educational speaker or have an idea for an event we can do for them, please contact me at 548-3798. Again, that's 548-3798 and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pam. The next speaker is Bonnie Adams.
Sorry, I'm still having a little trouble with my knee and stuff. I'm Bonnie Adams. First, I'd like to congratulate Mayor Najarian and I would like to thank you for talking with us this morning. I know you're busy, busy, busy. Everybody's busy. I want to comment on a statement that Mr. Weaver made last week. I am afraid, we, a lot of the topics last week were about gadflies and buzzy things, the noseums. Well, watch out for the noseums, guys, because they're still around and they're always going to be around as far as I'm concerned. He said, and I'm paraphrasing, but, and I don't think I'm getting the point wrong. Mr. Weaver said, in essence, that you, you guys, meaning Mike, myself and Margaret Hammond particularly, all of us three and Richard Aspiritu, always came up with the same topics, always came up bringing things to the council. So he said, "Let the staff do it. That's their job. Bring it to the staff. Bring it to the staff." Well, you know what? You, you people are the fall guys, whether you like it or not, because it always comes back to the council. It has to come back to the council. The staff can tap dance and stand on their heads and I don't care, but it comes back to the council. So whether you like it or not, Mr. Weaver, that is what's going to happen because things are not being done. And this is why we keep bringing the same topics up. I would also like to know if the Adams Square Libraries, to talk about accessibility in the, in the Adams Square Library, no one has brought that up. I, I do have a meeting with, with Mr. Zern Thursday and we will discuss what the, the topic of audible signals. But it's going to come back to the council. It has to. Now what do you guys do? Sit up in your ivory towers? I mean, I don't understand this. I mean, do you not want anything to do with anything that's going on? Let the staff do the job? Uh-uh. That doesn't go well with me. And I don't think it goes well with a lot of the people here. You know, I, I just, I, that really disturbed me when that state, that, that discussion was, that statement was made last week. So, you know, you know, get over it, guys, because this is, this is not going to happen here. We elected you because we trusted you and that's what we wanted. So whether, whether we agree with you or not, it's still coming back to you, like it or not. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Richard Aspiritu.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council and staff. I am Dr. Richard Aspiritu. Mr. McFaul, you and your staff and other people have done a tremendous job as far as the Americans with disability. Last week, I had the opportunity to speak to a gentleman who said I was one-dimensional. I guess I am one-dimensional when I keep talking about Americans with disability. However, seven years ago, I started coming to these chambers talking about public transportation. I was, started off with fixed, fixed, the fixed routes, paratransit. I moved to the topic of public parking. I talked about sidewalks and curbs. We had that discussion a couple of times. I even brought up the subject of accessibility in the parks. I talked about the police department, the jails, ADA sensitivity training. Those issues have been taken care of mostly. I even spoke about the city hall, talked about the seating, braille, hearing devices, countertops, drinking fountain, bathrooms, handrails and signage. This is a testament to the work that the city has done in finally listening to me. I even talked about the Alex Theater. You remember that discussion? I even raised questions about the employment practices of the city of Glendale. I even talked about accessibility to the libraries. One of the issues that I talked about was emergency information on Channel 6. I even talked about, had meetings with the fire department to create a list of people with disabilities so that they would know how to take care of people and know who these people are. Unfortunately, Mr. Aldesso is going to have to do some work now. The Federal Housing Administration, Highway, Federal Highway Administration just recently published Visual Detection and Warning Materials for Pedestrians with Visual Impairments. They even set up the guidelines of contrast for the sidewalks. We're putting in new sidewalks on Brand Boulevard. I don't think we meet those requirements, but that's for an engineer to determine. The FCC has issued a reminder to cable and satellite television service of their obligation for emergency service accessibility persons with hearing and visual disabilities. We're going to have a good one here. Department of Transportation has come up with a new draft revising covered accessibility for public transportation. I know we've talked about public transportation in the past. We're getting some new guidelines. This is also something else that's very interesting. There's a class action suit that's been brought against Caltrans. Failure to develop and implement comprehensive self-evaluation plan, keyword transition plan, we're not quite there yet. Missing curb cuts, unsafe curb cuts, unsafe pavement and non-compliance with public parking. All these issues I've raised in the past, these issues are being brought up once again. Yes, I am one-dimensional, but unfortunately, the Americans with Disability Act touches every aspect of our lives, from our children to our most frail senior citizens, in every other aspect. If it's good for the disabled, it has to be good for the general public. Thank you very much for your time. I hope Bobby will be able to find this. If he doesn't, have him give me a call. I'll tell him where to look.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond?
Good evening. Mayor Najarian, first time around, huh? Saying that? And members of the council-
Just roll off the tongue?
Huh?
Just roll off the tongue, Margaret?
Roll right off the tongue, kid.
Or does it get stuck in your throat?
And members of the staff and audience. I'm here, my name is Margaret Hammond and I am here this evening regarding the application for the use variance for 702 East Glen Oaks Boulevard, Glendale, California. And the letter is, Dear Mayor Najarian, in July of 2006, the city council accepted the protest filed by over 70% of the owners of the neighboring frontage and heard from hundreds of members of the community that the neighbors of 702 East Glen Oaks Boulevard did not want that property rezoned to commercial use. Although the application for rezoning was not granted by the city council, the owners of 702 East Glen Oaks have continued to operate their construction business. We understand that the owners first filed for a zone change from single-family residential to commercial use before the planning commission in 2006, after neighborhood services cited them for operating a business at 702 East Glen Oaks Boulevard in violation of the zoning ordinance. Public hearings were conducted before the planning commission for zone changes to commercial use and were denied. In January 2007, the owners of the house at 702 East Glen Oaks filed for a home occupation permit and a change in use variance, once again, after a misdemeanor complaint for violation of the zoning ordinance was filed against them by the city attorney. They continued to operate their business, Google MK Designers, Inc., and you will find a map showing the location of the business at 702 East Glen Oaks on the internet, even though they did not reside in the house. And although they advertised the business and had three people working in the house, the home, uh, home occupation application has been denied, has not been denied. Pending the decision on a home occupation permit and use variance, they have been allowed to continue operating their construction business in flagrant violation of the zoning ordinance, in our opinion. At this point, they are scheduled for a change of use variance before the zoning administrator. The hardship the owners of 702 East Glen Oaks claim is that the neighborhood is too noisy and dirty to reside in. A use variance is bad public policy and was abolished by Government Code Section 65906. A use variance is bad public policy and was abolished by Government Code Section 65906. This section provides that a variance shall not be granted for a parcel of property which authorizes a use or activity which is not expressly authorized by the zone regulation governing the parcel of property. For your information, we will request that the zoning administrator deny approval of the variance and/or the home occupation permit, given that these business owners openly accepted an arrangement for return of all fees by the city council and have openly defied the zoning ordinance by continuing to operate their business. See, the city attorney complained. There can be no justification for allowing them to continuing operating any business, whatever, at this address. And I am giving this as Margaret Hammond, the president of the Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council. And I have a copy of the letter for your file, and I believe you will be receiving it over the Internet or however. It is being heard in the morning at the zoning, right? So that is one thing that I wanted to bring to you. The other thing is, being a long, 50-year resident of Adams Hill, lots of things are happening. We're getting the mini park will be opened, I believe, by the end of May, and the library in September, and the Seritas Park is supposed to be opened July 31st, which is really something. That's going to be really terrific. Now, all we need is our pool put back and our tennis courts put back that you took out of Pacific Park. I think that would be very nice if you could arrange to do that, and if they had not been removed in the first place, we wouldn't have to spend the money to put them back again. So that's another thing that you could do for us in that area. We need the pools. There's lots of people down there can't afford to have pools. So maybe in other parts of Glendale, every other house has a pool, but that doesn't happen in our area. The other thing I would like to say is, a few weeks ago, I mentioned about having a shower for the ladies, wives of veterans and active soldiers.
About 30 seconds to conclude.
Okay, I don't know how many did it. Okay, thank you. But tonight, Mary Najarian, your mom, brought me some things. Now, isn't that really cute?
Well, you've got all the time you want now, Margaret.
See that? I knew your name would work. But, and this is some of the things, beautiful things, that I'm going to take down for that shower. I'm going to go down there to camp down below and take those with me, and I will tell them they came from Mrs. Najarian in Glendale, and they'll be very pleased with it. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Margaret.
Good evening. My name is Herbert Milano. Honorable Mayor Najarian, should I repeat that? I don't know if you're listening. Honorable Mayor Najarian, members of the city council, I'm addressing you today to obviously wish you a very successful year, and a special welcome to Councilman Draymond. I needed to do that and roll that off the tongue, Councilman Draymond. It sounds so very, very nice. I'm here to promote perhaps a new idea for this coming year, and the idea that I want to bring, or the concept that I want to promote, is candor. I think it is an essential ingredient for any organization to have. I try to promote it with many of my clients, how important it is to come forward and bring up those things that don't work, where we have failed, where we have not been able to achieve. And if we create that as part of our presentations, to tell the public, you know, we may have failed here, or we didn't do this as well, maybe eventually, maybe next year or the year after, we may have people come before the podium and accept the fact that not everything can be perfect, and then everything needs to be placed in the highest, most positive light. That a little bit of candor goes a long ways to giving the public a sense that you're being truthful with us. It is my hope that many of the projects of the city will not be twice as expensive or take twice as long to get accomplished. I'd also like to bring up a topic with regard to the recent events that occurred at Virginia Tech, and I remember the situation that happened in Columbine, that oftentimes, when an atrocity of this magnitude comes around, people tend to overreact, and we find ourselves people promoting policies that are not necessarily the wisest policies. I want to remind individuals that situations such as the one that occurred at Virginia Tech are incredibly rare statistically, albeit they are horrendous to watch, and that we do not move forward to take action that may be incredibly expensive to our budget and incredibly ineffective, because oftentimes, these issues, we cannot be protected for everything that happens in life. I want to address the issue that Margaret Hammond brought forward, and that is that my hope that while Mr. Najarian is still mayor, that we will have an opportunity to celebrate a new aquatic facility. I was told that the whole process of selecting a proper aquatic facility may take as long as six months. I think that hundreds of aquatic facilities have been built in California and in Nevada that we can take a look at, with examples to basically move forward without having an extended period of time to have a vision, especially for Mr. Najarian, who was a, many people don't know, he was a competitive swimmer in childhood. It would be quite suitable for us to have an aquatic facility during your term. One last thing, I would like to encourage the city council to move forward with, for the consideration of campaign contribution limits or campaign reform. This past election, we saw a significant increase in the amount of monies collected. One, I believe, candidate raised over $220,000, and a couple more went over the $100,000 mark, if I understand that correctly. We are thankful, obviously, that Councilman Draymond managed to get elected with a significant amount less than that, so money doesn't always play a role, but I think it still plays an undue role in our elections, and it gives the public the feeling that oftentimes, those individuals who are donating or contributing money are affecting the eventual ordinances and the attention that we give to their special interests. So it is my hope that we can move forward with campaign contribution limits so that by the next election, we may have a different type of influence having to play in the elections as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Farrell.
Oh, Bill Farrell, and as always, I'm representing Glendale Community Concerts, and I don't want to be one-dimensional. So John Ballion's name was mentioned a while ago by one of the gentlemen. He's supposed to run in a relay race. Now, I worked out with him for years at the Y, and I can't visualize him running a race, but he has to be one of the strongest men in this town, I tell you, and he's a very nice person, very, very nice. And what I want to talk about is, we had to move the Lock and Out of Town Singers possibly next year, but they're going to, trying to perform in the Alex Theater in June. So unexpectedly, I had to find another group of artists for this coming Sunday, and it's the String Family Players. It's a quintet. Now, a lot of people get turned off when you say string quintet. These people play music over 400 years' time, from the 17th century right up until the 21st. They're very entertaining, they're very proficient, all of them are outstanding musicians. And they'll be here this Sunday, the 22nd, at 2:30. And then on Sunday, May 13th, we're having the Tambour Ritzens come again. Now, that's 40-plus dancers, singers, acrobats, and so forth. And they're all from Eastern Europe. It's really fun. You go backstage, and you see all these beautiful young ladies and handsome men and so forth, and I can't understand a word they're all saying, but they're all just having a great time. And they're going to perform for us on 13th. And the other thing I want to mention again is, our website is www.glendalecommunityconcerts.com. And the other number to call, not mine, is 248-3133. Now, we have a secretary that handles all these things for information and any questions that come up for any of our concerts, but somehow or other, everybody calls me. So the other thing I wanted to mention is, I'm really sorry I missed the last meeting that you all had here where you selected Ara as the mayor and so forth. I got a letter from Mike Antonovich today on my email in his office. Somebody sent it to me, and described all the events, blow by blow, to me, and I said, gee, my wife, I said, I had to miss that?
And words do not do it justice.
I wanted to mention another thing here, so I'm not just one-dimensional. Margaret Hammond had a birthday at our last concert, which was March 25th, and she missed out because former mayor Dave Weaver and his wife were there. And, you know, you all might pay attention to this, because I've asked you all many, many times to come to our concerts. Dave Weaver did, and he defied the odds, and he's still sitting right there. So I just want to put that, point that out to you. He came. So let's see, I don't want to miss anything here. I made some quick notes.
When's the next concert?
This Sunday, 22nd, 2:30, and I'll be at the door, and you can be my guest. Mr. Draymond, you've never heard the invitation before, but now you have. We've been around for 55 years, and it's really hard for me to understand so many people don't know about us. And Artie's going to come, too, right? So anyway, I thank you very much for your time, and I think I've not been one-dimensional, and I really enjoy Margaret Hammond. I don't know about everybody else, but I enjoy Margaret Hammond. She comes to all of our concerts. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Mayor Najarian, council members, good evening. My name is Vartan Garbetian. I'm a longtime resident of Glendale. Happy note, I'm here tonight to just congratulate newly-elected officials, Mr. Draymond, Mr. Weaver, congratulations, you did it fair and square. Now we know how you got elected. Mayor Najarian, congratulations to you. I think between all the mayors of Glendale, you're going to be most remembered with the events of last night. And I had a very disturbing email, I received a very disturbing email this morning from Tony Soprano. He was very disappointed that he was not nominated, and he was not elected, he was nominated, was not elected. And I think he wanted to attend, but Mr. Najarian, he knew your brother was going to be here, so he decided not to. Congratulations again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vartan. Nancy Hunt Coffey.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, Leon Mayer, who is a longtime volunteer of the library and is a member of our Friends of the Library Board, couldn't be here this evening. He's at an event, and so he asked me if I would step in and quickly give you a summary of the events that we have going on. It is National Library Week, as Mary Miller mentioned earlier tonight. It is therefore fine-free week, which means that anyone who has an overdue book can bring it back to the library, and we will waive their fines, which is a great program because we get our books back. On Saturday, April 24th, at 2:00 p.m., in the Central Library Children's Room, we will be having the Swazal Puppet Company that'll entertain the children that come and attend. Tomorrow night, we are having Sisters in Crime Mystery Writers at 7:00 p.m. at the Central Library. Thursday night, we will be having a program on Freedom of the Press in Armenia. It's also in the Central Library Auditorium at 7:00 p.m. And on Saturday, we will be hosting Carolyn Howard Johnson, who will be having a poetry workshop called "Don't Let It Molder in a Drawer, Publish It." The other thing I wanted to mention is that on April 30th, we will be opening our branch libraries more hours, so we welcome you all to come out to your neighborhood branch libraries and enjoy them. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Barry Allen.
Actually, I spoke to Tony Soprano earlier, and he was really disappointed, but he sends his congratulations.
And some cash.
Good evening, Your Honor, Judge Najarian, council staff, and the public. I'm Barry Allen of Vanguard, the community accountability watchdog. Last night, the council appointed Mr. Najarian the mayor for the next year. In his acceptance, he indicated that as a judge pro tem, he would use that training to run council meetings like a judge. The public, not just the citizens of Glendale, but the public, was expecting a mayor, not a judge. A judge has private sidebar meetings and meetings in chambers when he doesn't want the public to hear the discussion, and sends the jury away when he doesn't want them to be privy to secret information. This is not what the public wants. The public wants openness, transparency, and public debate. In fact, we want fewer closed sessions. Closed sessions are permissible, not mandatory. Judge Najarian wants decency and decorum, no laughter, applause, jeering, cheering, smirking, or sneering. We want accountability, our First Amendment rights of expression and of the press. We want Vanguard and other media available in the city hall, even if it is critical to the government. Judge Najarian, we await your ruling on that availability, as we know that you, as an officer of the court, would not jeopardize the First Amendment, as did your predecessor. We want to be able to emote and share our opinions by expression, things that were deniered us by the former mayor, whose actions result in at least one civil rights lawsuit. We want a council free of corruption. The oath of office that the council members took included pledging your allegiance to the U.S. and California constitutions, not the Glendale Charter or municipal code that includes admonitions on the use of your office for private gain. We want to be encouraged to come before council and state our case, not discouraged by the flaunting of public office. We want civility from the dais, along with your full attention, turn off your cellphones and BlackBerrys, take turns going into the back room, and stay with us and stay alert. Your Honor, we respectfully request that you reconsider being a judge and staying the mayor, a job for which you're well-qualified. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard. Thank you.
Do you rest, Mr. Allen?
I rest.
Thank you.
Here comes the judge, I guess. Council, or Mayor Najarian, council members and staff, Al Hoffman, resident of Glendale. First of all, I want to congratulate you, Mayor Najarian. I have every confidence you'll do a fine job and be a great mayor for our town, and not remembered because of last night. And congratulations to Councilman Draymond and to Councilman Weaver for his reelection. I came here, I was just going to come here to congratulate you, and my wife kind of insisted on not saying anything. She chastised me that I was a bit rough last week, especially to you, Councilman Josefion, and she said, you shouldn't have done that. But anyhow, something came up today. I was at my chiropractor's office, and a lady that works there, she and her husband live in the garden apartments, the old Area 14 thing on Central. And she says, you always go down to the council, and is there any hope of ever saving that thing? And I said, well, gee, what's going on with it? She says, well, it's just deteriorating. The owner is not maintaining it, the trees and everything are out of control, the place is dirty, it's full of insects and spiders and whatnot. And I told her, well, I said, I'm not sure. They made the decision last year against all of the community that was opposed to changing and trying to preserve the garden apartments. I said, I would bring it up. I was in aerospace engineering my whole career, and a lot of times, we made decisions that as we trundled along, we had to change. We found that, man, this was the wrong decision. So I brought it up this evening, that maybe this thing can be reconsidered. I think the garden apartments should be preserved. They are really a historic place in Glendale, and I think the whole community around there is totally opposed to doing and having them tore down. And I think I find it despicable. And I think I find it despicable that the owner is letting the property deteriorate. Uh, that is not right. Uh, as the people are living there, I'm sure he's trying to discourage them and having them leave. I don't know what the plans are, but I would ask the council to look into it again and maybe reconsider that decision, because decisions can be overturned. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Linda LaLyon.
My name is Linda LaLyon, and again, I'm here on behalf of Car Park Neighborhood Watch to remind the councilmen, the new mayor, and the city staff about our traffic, fume, pollution, and noise problems on campus, East Harvard, and Main Art Streets. But first, I would like to take this opportunity to congratulate Mr. Drayman, Mr. Weaver for reelection, and Ara Najarian for becoming a mayor. As I watched the program last night, I was impressed with the speeches you made and was glad to hear that you are making a commitment to bring positive changes in the life of our city and the lives of the residents who live here. Last week, Mr. Starboard was kind enough to tell us that he had several talks with Dr. Escalante, and that Dr. Escalante was to listen to suggestions about the problems surrounding Glendale High School. Mr. Zern mentioned that he had an appointment with the school district at the end of this month, and the council agreed that this issue was known to them, and it was time to do something about it. We're still waiting. As for yesterday and today, the residents of our neighborhood have enjoyed a normal life as our, as other residents around Hoover and other schools due to this week being spring break, and there's no school, so we have no traffic, and we are enjoying some quiet and peaceful and fumeless days. Last week, Mr. Weaver encouraged me to talk to city staff before coming to the council, to which I tried to respond. We have had correspondence with the city staff for almost five months. While many excuses and delays have been made as to why we cannot have residential parking-only signs and one-way street on campus, and I think that's mainly because the school was being considered more than the residents and the quality of our lives in that neighborhood. Also, last week, you mentioned that the city had helped to fund the new moisey field, for which I would like to again ask, why was there not an environmental impact survey done? In an email to Dr. Franklin, the Assistant Superintendent, I had posed the same question and requested the outcome of the survey, to which Dr. Franklin responded in an email that under Section 15302, this improvement was exempt. However, Dr. Franklin failed to read further about the SEQA exemption, which I would like to briefly read to you. SEQA exempts a number of specific types of projects from its provisions. For example, emergency repairs to public service facilities and specific actions necessary to prevent or mitigate an emergency are statutorily exempt from SEQA. Anyway, it just goes on. But, it continues to say that exemptions cannot be used for projects which have cumulative impacts when there is a reasonable possibility that there may be a significant impact due to unusual circumstances. And these unusual circumstances, as I have said before, have been the increased activity and the use of the moisey field, you know, being rented out to other, other schools and colleges. I was going to have several people with me here, but I made a mistake, and I told them that this meeting was canceled because of the 24th. However, um, it's next week, so that's why the other people aren't here. We hope to be here on Wednesday next week. So, I wrote, we are here to see a major change in our neighborhood, that means improvement of traffic, pedestrian as well, especially during the football field, football season, parking and noise nuisance due to extra activity that is brought from local and outside schools to our neighborhood. If this is a stadium, the city and the district is responsible to soundproof it and create a safe and pleasant environment for us to live in that neighborhood, and to enjoy, you know, as the rest of the city residents in Glendale, to have really a quality of life over there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. My last card is from Isabel Meyer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Isabel Meyer, and it was my understanding that one of the items on the agenda was going to be the city council approval of the Rosefloat design for next year. It's gonna be next week. Okay. I'm not sure that I'll be able to be here next week, so let me just say very briefly that I would like to encourage city council to approve the design of next year's Rosefloat, which includes a wonderful rendering of the Grand Central Airport Terminal, a very significant historic building in the city of Glendale, not only on a local level, but on a national, on a, on a state and national level. As some of you may know, the Grand Central Airport was the first west coast terminal for air traffic. The first flights to the east coast went from the Grand Central Airport. And Walt Disney Company has been the owner of this building as part of their creative campus for some years, and as part of the agreement with the city, promised that by, I believe, 2012, they would restore the Grand Central Airport Terminal. Some deterioration that the Historical Society has noticed over the last few years has made us concerned that Disney follow through on this promise. And I would just like to say that as a member of the Board of the Historical Society, I feel that approving this design would go a long way toward bringing this building to the attention of the public and encouraging the Walt Disney Company to follow through on the promise to restore that very important building. As the volunteer curator of the Doctor's House Museum in Brown Park, I'd also like to invite all the members of the city council to come to the Doctor's House. Any Sunday, we're open from 2:00 to 4:00, except on major holidays and when it rains cats and dogs. Right now, we have an exhibit out that celebrates needle art of women over, over time. We have wonderful examples of the clothing and decorative items that women have created through needlework. Starting next month, through the month of May and June, we will have an exhibit called Pretty in White. It will be a, an exhibit of wedding dresses, lawn dresses, and all kinds of spectacular pieces of clothing, of vintage clothing, starting from the Victorian era. I know for you gentlemen, that may not be the ultimate thrill, but nevertheless, I hope that maybe your girlfriends, wives, daughters, whoever, may find that you would like, they would like to see that, and maybe you will join them. So I hope you will come out. If you've never been to the Doctor's House, it's a wonderful place in the Glendale Park system, and I think a little pearl in the crown of Glendale. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes oral communications. Let's move on now to city council, city council and staff comments. Mr. Quintero.
Okay, I have a number of things this evening. I'm gonna start by welcoming Mr. Drayman, Councilmember Drayman. Very, very happy he's here with us, and, um, I think his insight, his general knowledge of the city and his vision for the city, I think are right on target, so I'm very happy he's going to, to be with us in the future. And then I want to congratulate Mr. Najarian, and, but I especially want to congratulate his mom and dad, who, like most children, didn't give them enough, enough recognition. But Dr. Najarian and his wife, Mary, who happens to be an RN, I think are typical of many of, of the people that have moved to Glendale. They actually came from another country, moved to the United States, started their practice in medicine, raised a wonderful family, as you can tell, and now have wonderful grandchildren. In addition to that, they spend countless hours and have raised hundreds of thousands of dollars for charities in Armenia, so they really need to be congratulated, not only on this son's accomplishment, but on their entire family and their grandkids who left are my Christopher and Alexander, my workout buddies, my bodybuilding. When they go with their dad to all these different conferences, they wind up in the gym, and they're gonna become tremendous bodybuilders. So they're probably home, very embarrassed, listening to me talk about them, but they're wonderful, wonderful kids. Then in terms of the two speakers tonight, number one, I want to remind one of the speakers that the majority of this council had nothing to do with the pool situation there in, at Pacific Edison. So hopefully, we are gonna restore a pool. I was personally opposed to that removal, and I think real soon, we'll be putting the money together, and we'll, we'll build a pool in, in Pacific Edison where it's absolutely needed. And then the other speaker mentioned the Area 14th and 14, and hopefully, that will be coming back on the agenda, and we can take a fresh look at Area 14 and, and the zoning. And I personally, I know that complex very well, and it's just to say, it's just a shame. It's a wonderful, wonderful complex that we could have done so much with, but who knows? That chapter hasn't been written yet, so. Congratulations to Mr. Najarian, his family, and to Mr. Drayman.
Thank you, Frank. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, I wonder if it would be appropriate to adjourn tonight's meeting in the memory of the 31 individuals killed at Virginia Tech, worst mass slang in the history of the country, I guess. Is that appropriate?
We did that last night.
To me?
We did that last night.
Well, can we do it tonight at council?
I, I think it would be appropriate to, to do that again.
And secondly, I'd like to get a report back as soon as possible on establishing a hotline for illegal construction activities that happened at night or on weekends. Um, I think it's feasible. I'd like to see how soon we could implement that. There's too much going on, we get too many calls from individuals that are talking about it, and they don't know where to call on a weekend. And, third, last week's meeting, which was my last one to chair, with a matter of minutes after the meeting, I got an email from Burson, who remained anonymous, said, Mr. Weaver, you were an embarrassment to the city tonight. And I have to agree, I was an embarrassment last week, in what, I embarrassed myself, and I apologize for that. It's tough sometimes trying to, as the mayor running the meeting, to attempt to maintain decorum, and it's a challenge for the mayor to maintain that decorum sometimes. If people want to challenge it, it's very difficult to, to do it tactfully. There's, there's no luxury in trying to find a way to, to handle it, and I didn't have it the right way. Some individuals like to say things, give the appearance of irritating you, whatever. We don't have the luxury to sit up here and, and respond to it. We don't have that luxury. We have to take it, we can be accused of anything. I should know that, and I shouldn't have responded. I apologize, and I'll try not to let it happen again in the next four years. So with that, folks, I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Yosefion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Several items. First of all, I would like to ask staff to possibly initiate some sort of service through Neighborhood Services for the Garden Apartments, to make sure that they are following the city codes as far as cleanliness and some of the things that they are doing, so they're not in code violation. The second question I have is, it was mentioned that, and maybe the zoning administrator or Scott Howard can answer, the issue of use variance has been banned and abolished. If somebody could answer that question?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that Government Code section applies to general law cities. We are a charter city. That doesn't mean that use variances are not disfavored, somewhat of a double negative there. They are, but as a charter city, we still have the power and authority to grant or consider and/or grant a use variance.
The reason I ask, because I remember that there are many churches in this town that actually have a use variance that are in residential, and when I was on BZA, we used to grant those. And so I just wanted to make sure if the law has changed recently.
That, that section's been, that section's been there for, for many years, and again, it applies to general law cities. We derive their powers through the state legislature. We derive our powers from the state constitution as a charter city.
Thank you very much. The other item that I wanted to deal with is with the speaker, Bonnie Adams, who came out and made some comments about whether we sit on our ivory towers. Bonnie, I just want to let you know, just because one council member makes a statement, please do not generalize that the rest of us are the same. Uh, you know, and this is the issue that has been in the forefront for the last five years, which is, one person will say a boneheaded comment, and next thing you know, the whole council is now, is painted with the same brush. Please do not do that. You know, we all make mistakes, but don't burn all of us in the same place, you know? Just, just go after the one who says it. And, and, and my understanding is that, one of my colleagues has already apologized, and I hope that he'll move on with that. The other thing that I also would like to ask our mayor to deal with is, in the last week or so, I watched Arts and Culture Commission, and there was some issue about what is their goal, what is it they need to do, and they basically don't have anything to do. As you know, as we brought, I brought the idea of Unity Fest to the city of Glendale. It was always our position that after the festival got started and it has its legs, this should be something that should be taken care of by Arts and Culture. So since, Mr. Mayor, you're the one who appoints this type of committees, I don't know how we go about doing this, maybe you can just appoint them to do something, but I think that would be a, a natural fit for Unity Fest, which is nothing but arts and culture. So they'll have something to do and look forward to working on something. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. By the way, congratulations, you did a good job so far. There's a, there's a whole year out there, so.
Before Mr. Dray, before I go to Mr. Drayman, let me just state that it's our intention to come back to council with a, with a comprehensive series of policies to direct the particular, several particular commissions in particular, to be in charge of other events throughout the year. But, but that's a good point, and hopefully, we'll get that soon, and I'm sure we'll be discussing that shortly. Mr. Drayman.
Yes, thank you. Since I'm the new kid on the block, I have a little catching up to do with a number of questions that were forwarded to me in the last 24 hours, 12 hours. One thing that I want to do, and I said if I were to be elected, I must do, I'm gonna do now. Can I ask if Margaret Hammond can step up to the podium? I have something for her. It's a personal gift. That is to say, it's personal for me, not a personal gift.
Margaret, we're not responsible for his fashion sense, I just want to let you know.
Margaret, I believe that, and I'm only speaking for myself, but I, I believe that you are due a new hat.
Oh, sorry to disappoint. I'll be wearing it.
So.
Oh, my goodness. How you like that one?
Compliments of Annie Scandal in Montrose Shopping Park.
Oh, my goodness.
And I think, Margaret, you should hold out and bring this hat back to council and ask every council member to autograph the brim for you.
Oh, all right, all right. I, well, I, you think I should model it right now?
I think you should.
Okay. There we go. In case you all thought I didn't have any hair.
You do.
I do. Okay. How's that, fellas?
That'll be good in the summer.
I'll have to get a red dress to wear with that. How's that? Thank you very much. I really have fun. You guys know I, you're my family, and I really do enjoy my life in Glendale. It's wonderful.
Margaret, now you have an excuse to buy an outfit to go with the hat.
That's what I said, I have to go. That's what I said, I have to get me a red dress. Thank you.
Good start, John.
Mr. Mayor, a couple of other things. First of all, my congratulations to you. I know that last night, we made some sort of history here. It was very important to me that we have a unanimous vote, and if I had to abstain to sort of prompt that, so maybe it wasn't technically unanimous, but we're all very proud of you, and I thank you for taking on that responsibility. Also, I'd like to remind folks that Prom Plus has an event in the Montrose Shopping Park on April 22nd. It's a Taste of Montrose, and I'm not sure that you are aware of that down here, so let me make you aware of it now. It runs in tandem with the Montrose Harvest Market. On Sunday, April the 22nd, for a small fee, you can receive a wristband, and then you can go into any of the participating stores and booths and sample food there, and try out some of the restaurants in the Montrose area, not just in the shopping park, but in the Montrose area. And the funds go to Prom Plus, which provides an alternative location for our high school seniors to attend on prom night. They have a wonderful casino night, and I mean, it is something to behold. So if you're not doing anything on the 22nd, and even if you are, find your way to Montrose for at least a little while for that. Question, the most asked question since last night, believe it or not, had nothing to do with the events here, but about this name placard. And I wasn't going to address it, but I'm going to because so many people have asked. No, I have not been slighted. It says Jay Drayman instead of John Drayman. It's not that the name is too long, it's not that I was slighted in any way. I was asked, when I was elected to office, what I would like the placard to say, and I requested that in honor of my father, whose name was Jay, Jacob, J. And so it's just a small gesture to him, since he began bringing me to city council at the age of five, forty-some years ago. So that was the reason for that. And two last items. One is, with all the announcements and so on, I think we missed council member Yusefian's anniversary, if I'm not mistaken. A few years ago, we witnessed a proposal, and then subsequent to that, we witnessed an acceptance, and somehow, he got off the hook, whoop, got off the hook last night without a mention of that, so I'd like to mention it now. Congratulations to Bob and Sue Yusefian on their, what number? Two, on their second anniversary. And lastly, on the notion of the Armenian genocide, I was struck earlier today, there was a meeting to thank Mr. Weaver for his time as mayor most recently, and there was a tape tribute, or a television tribute to him and some of the accomplishments that he brought to the city in the last year. And one of them was a snippet of Mr. Weaver talking about the genocide, and why it's important that it be recognized, and the problems that it creates that it has not been recognized. And I wanted to touch on that for just a moment. And what prompted me to do this was a piece of mail I received just after the election. Unfortunately, when you are in the public eye in any capacity, sometimes there are people that send you some unfortunate things. This was one of those pieces. It was, there was no return address. It was just a hate piece that was mailed, published by a fellow named Dr. E.R. Fields. And I mentioned his name, although I don't want to give him any press, but Mr. E.R. Fields is a well-known Holocaust denier, and a former grand dragon of the Memphis Ku Klux Klan, and a neo-Nazi, and you get the drift. And in this little piece, he's talking about Armenians, and Jews, and blacks, and Catholics, a good portion of those people that make up the United States, and certainly, a portion of the people that make up the city of Glendale, and his issues with all of them. I just wanted to say that one of the reasons that when people deny the Holocaust, they're viewed as being fringe lunatics, or the crazies, you might say, is because this country has stepped forward, along with other nations of this world, and said, "We recognize the Holocaust." And so, our government doesn't provide cover for those who would deny the Holocaust. As someone who is the offspring of survivors of the Holocaust, I obviously take exception to those who would deny it, but I have some comfort in the fact that our own government says, "These are the facts. We provide no cover for those who would deny such events." But we don't have that kind of a statement for the Armenian genocide, and that is unfortunate, and it's the reason that I would support that, and I know some of my colleagues do as well. But it just seemed to be interesting timing that this arrived, and it is most unfortunate. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, John. And ladies and gentlemen, again, I'm your new mayor, I'm not your judge. However, there are certain duties that a judge does perform that are somewhat analogous to running a city council meeting. That's number one, to keep the meeting going and keeping it on track. And sometimes, a judge acts as a referee between certain sides. I'm certainly ready to do that. I'm not in any way proclaiming or insinuating that I am the sole finder of truth, but my job is to, hopefully, with my colleagues seated beside me, to get to a fair decision. And in that regard, we all act as judges. We act as a panel of judges, seeking the truth and finding what's best for the city. So if I ever insinuated or inferred that I am a judge now, no, and I apologize for that. As you saw earlier in the meeting, I am accepting priority requests for oral communications and for other lengthy hearings. Please come forward, let the clerk know that you're requesting priority, and it's for a reason you're requesting priority, because you have to go to another event, back home, take care of the kids, back to work, or whatever. We're trying to accommodate you and appreciate you coming down to council, and that's for everybody. And I expressed yesterday that it wouldn't be a council meeting if we didn't have Bonnie, or Herbert, or Margaret, or Barry, or Al, we're seeing a lot of Al lately. Please come forward. I want to hear your remarks. You know, we're not perfect. If there's something wrong in the city that we don't see, many times, you are the first eyes that see it, and come forward and let us know. If there's something that we've done that's egregious, in error, I know you're not shy to come forward and let us know that you think that we're wrong. I appreciate that. My only hope is that if it is a mistake, and we have made a mistake, that we'll be able to learn from that and not repeat that mistake. I am going to insist, like a judge, however, on decorum, appropriate behavior, and appropriate speech, and no rudeness. We are on the verge of something great. I'm very excited with my council members. I think we've got a group that can handle problems and deal with them from a different perspective, perhaps like no other city council has. We're energized with John Drayman. We have Dave Weaver's years of experience. We've got the Passion for the City by Bob Yusefian. We've got the business background, the perception and the intuitiveness of Frank Quintero. I'm going to hopefully keep us focused on the right issues, and we're going to tackle some tough issues. There's going to be things that we do up here that you will not agree with, that we will not agree with each other. But folks, it's the time that we all agree with each other without any discussion that you need to worry about. And I'm confident that we're all quite firm and able to take criticism and give criticism, and hopefully, discuss the issues and move on to the next day's topics and the next item on the agenda. So I think the people of Glendale have that to look forward to, and it is going to be exciting, and we are going to make great progress. A few quick points in response to the speakers. Mr. Howard, if I could get from you perhaps a copy of the New York ordinance on the trans fats, and maybe we could have a discussion, and just in general terms, discuss some of the issues that would be involved in even considering such a ban on such food substances?
We'll get it, and we'll also take a look and determine whether state law preempts local agencies from addressing food additives or other food products.
Thank you.
Works with barbecue also, grilling.
As well as the enforcement, and just a general, I know it is a multifaceted issue that hopefully, you could spend a little bit of time and give me a brief on, as well as sharing that with the council and the public, if it's not privileged information. The aquatics park, I'm very proud to hear that we're talking about it more often, and we're going to get it in by hook or by crook. We're going to have an aquatics park, folks. Campaign reform, I think this election sort of turned common logic on its ear. I don't know how much money you raised, John, but I don't think it was in the six figures, and you had quite a successful result. Mr. Manukian raised more money than anyone has, and did not really have a fortunate result. So I'm not sure that money is the factor that we once, that I once thought it was before this election. I agree with Mr. Yusefian to address the issues of any code enforcement at the Garden Apartments, and that's something that we explained to the folks from Area 14, let's call it, that should there be any quality of life issues that they feel are deteriorating, whether it was garbage on the streets, or trash cleanup, or maintenance of landscaping, that the city is more than ready and happy to address that and send the appropriate agency out to help it get cleaned up. And as a final reminder, my last comment is, just to remind everyone that our meeting on April 24th is going to be continued to April 25th, Wednesday, 6:00 PM in the chambers, so please don't come to the chambers on Tuesday. I'm sorry. Come to the Alex Theater for the commemoration. And if there's nothing else from council or staff, let's move on to the next item, please.
Next item, that 8A is Director of Public Works regarding Glendale Beeline Service Contract. That 8A1 is motion extending the existing Beeline Service Contract with MV Transportation Inc. for fifteen months, and increasing the amount. 8A2's resolution appropriating $924,029.
Thank you. I have cards. And Mr. Quintero?
Before we go to the cards, I have a question. In terms of the filling the CNG, going out to Burbank and so forth, how long is that going to continue? I mean...
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, it's probably a good point, because I know this has been a question of me and of other council members about this as well. You'll recall, we purchased a natural gas fueling station from the gas company for about $3 million. It sits on Doran, just by, under the 134 freeway. At the time that we began to design and consider the Fairmont flyover, it became apparent that that particular facility would have to be relocated for the construction. Our hope was that we would be able to use that facility up until the time that we constructed a new facility, with the concept being, we would incorporate it into a potential maintenance facility down on Gardena near the Glendale Transportation Center. Unfortunately, the equipment gave out before we had a chance to construct a new facility. The equipment, although we spent a lot of time and money in trying to get that equipment, or keep that equipment running, it finally gave up. It was old, it was tired, it was obsolete, it's not made anymore. Came down to the point then is, do we go ahead and see if we can inject a tremendous amount of money in the existing facility to keep it going, prior to us being able to build the new facility, or would we, in the meantime, see what our alternatives were? And we didn't think it would be, the amount of money we would have to invest in trying to maintain the facility far exceeded what we thought was in the best interest of the city. So we went ahead and issued an RFP to construct a new facility here in Glendale. Those RFPs were out, they have been, proposal's been returned, we're in the process of reviewing those now. It takes approximately eight months to construct a facility, so to answer your question, that's about the timeframe. We may be looking somewhere around eight to 12 months before our facility's up and running. So in the meantime, Burbank remains the closest facility.
Okay, so about eight months. And where's the new?
The new facility would be at the piece of property we own on Gardena.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and do that prior to actually building the terminal, if you want to.
The maintenance facility, right. What we ended up doing is went ahead and took it, and we are pursuing a public-private development on this. This is similar to what Burbank has. We think it's in the best interest of the city to have that kind. The developer comes in and builds the facility. We get a certain discounted rate for a long-term contract on the fuel. We also get consideration for that individual to sell fuel to the general public, and like I said, they build it. So what we're doing right now, and that's part of what's taking a little bit longer, is trying to incorporate the fueling facility into what our ultimate design for the maintenance facility is going to be, because a fueling facility will more than likely precede the construction of the maintenance facility.
And we did receive several million dollars from the MTA for the construction of that.
Mayor Najarian, yes, we did, and we, well, let me back up. We received several million dollars from the MTA to build the maintenance facility. We've received also a small but welcome grant from the AQMD to build just the fueling portion of it.
Thank you. Let me go to Mr. Yusefian, then back to Mr. Quintero.
I know that the Burbank facility also has a hydrogen fueling facility as part of the deal that they cut with, I think it was Clean Energy or something of that nature.
Clean Energy, yes, sir.
So I'm hoping that we will keep that in mind, considering the fact that the federal government is trying to push for hydrogen-operated vehicles and so on and so forth, and I don't think it costs them any more than that, so.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, and I know we've had this discussion before, both publicly and privately, we continue to look and stay on top of all the different alternative fuels out there. Hydrogen is one we've talked about before. It seems to be moving a little bit more than we thought it would, so we will definitely keep our eye on it.
Right, because my experience with AQMD has been that they are going to get to a point that even CNG buses will not be able to meet AQMD requirements within the next ten years or so, and they want to get to a zero pollution. And the only thing you can do zero pollution is either complete electric, or you're going to have to go to hydrogen, which is expensive today, but then again, when I bought a Plasma TV four years ago, it was $6,000, and today, you can get one for $999, so it's all relevant, how much technology moves.
We'll continue to keep up on that, Mr. Quintero.
I like the idea of a public facility, by the way.
Yes.
I think that's a very good idea. Now, Mr. Starburg, I have a question. In terms of we do options for our natural gas purchases with GWP, et cetera, is this something that we can also get involved in for our bus fleet? I mean, we're actively looking for contracts, and you know, the kind of trading that we do, et cetera? Or is it a totally different?
Well, if I can, Mr. Starburg. Please do. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Quintero, when we had the facility through the gas company, we were getting a very competitive rate, not quite the same rate GWP was getting, but a very competitive rate, and they had some different, there were some different issues involved in how the delivery to them came. Really came down to, part of it was transportation and taxes that are involved in the process, and GWP gets a little bit more of a favorable rate. This company that we're proposing Clean Energy has, or one of its competitors, they have agreements set up in place with Southern California Gas, and get a very, very favorable rate. Again, I'm not sure it's quite as good a rate as the utilities are getting, but they are in a special category. When we made our inquiries... I was going to say, I would imagine that the bus usage, as much as it may seem like a lot, is probably minuscule in comparison of the volumes that GWP purchases, so it could very well be that to try and do the sort of advanced purchase for that facility, they're just two different beasts altogether, which is why it probably makes more sense to work with one of the utilities for it. But it's certainly something we can look at, but my guess is, they're a drop in the bucket compared... compared to the volumes that we purchase.
Okay, would any of my colleagues like to have a summary of the report?
No.
Okay. Then I'd like to go to the public and call Nancy Kent.
My name's Nancy Kent, I'm a resident of Glendale, and since the Beeline is on the agenda, I wanted to mention that this year I have started to use the Beeline. I would call myself an infrequent user, but I'm very impressed that it runs on schedule and the drivers are good and courteous, helpful, good drivers, and there are always plenty of passengers when I ride it, and the fare is low, I hope it stays that way. And I would also like to thank Mayor Najarian for making a public announcement that sometimes you use the Beeline bus, and that's setting a good example for others to leave your car at home and take the bus, and also improving our air quality. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Dr. Richard Espirito.
Once again, good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and staff. I am Dr. Richard Espirito. I started off a number of years ago talking about this issue, this is another deja vu. Regarding the issue about the natural gas, I think Mr. Quintero already raised this issue. One of the other questions that was caught, raised was that during the last five years, and I will give you documentation to this, MV Transportation paid a total, was paid a total of $2.2 million for replacement of parts. One of the other issues was ADA regarding destination signs, wheelchair lift, and safety edges. This is required by federal law. Why is this now just being addressed, and shouldn't this come out of the general fund? The proposed, the preparation of buses, these new buses that we've gotten for the Beeline are not actually new buses, they're old buses, but we got them at no cost from Foothill Transit and MV Transportation. How much does it cost to paint a bus, get it up to code, and put it out on the field? There was an interesting statement, it says we're going to have to increase the payment because of the fact that we need to have appropriate maintenance. I'd like to bring up the issue that there was a problem in this copy of the report that was given to us on MV Transportation on the short route system. These auditors had problems justifying the repairs with the reports and the invoices. The other interesting thing regarding the maintenance of the buses, on April 11th, four buses went down. On April the 12th, four more buses went down. On the 13th, four more buses went down. On Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, there were two buses that went down each, every single day. On Wednesday and Friday, that would have been the 11th and 13th, two buses went down. Yesterday, six buses went down, pulled out of service. Also, there has been, one of those buses was at JPL. How long does it take the repairman to go all the way to JPL, fix it, and get it back down here? The last time that happened, it took, that bus was out of service for a total of four hours. One of the other issues that they said was the increase of medical cost that MV is having to pay for. Unfortunately, MV does not offer any medical benefits other than is paid for by the employees. You remember our discussion several years ago, Mr. Najarian, Mayor Najarian, I'm sorry. Labor rates have all been fixed by the fact that they have a contract with local 848 of the Teamsters, and that's why I'm wearing their colors, because they're watching this tonight. I have a question, and this is the most important question. There's been a number of things bounced around in this proposal, $7 million, $10 million, and $21 million. I want to give to each one of you a copy of the contract that was signed on 604 by the city, by MV Transportation, Senior Assistant City Attorney, and the Finance Department. Shows the contract of maintenance, labor, and everything else. I'd like to submit this to each one of the members of the City Council and to the City Attorney, that he'll have a copy of it. Thank you very much. I think we should reconsider this contract very seriously.
Thank you, Dr. Espirito. Barry Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and former Judge Najarian.
It was a short, short career.
The discussion earlier was accepted. The, I'm Barry Allen with Vanguard. The, this particular issue of the Beeline, you know, we've talked for several years about the fact that the MV Transportation has not done a very good job for the city. There hasn't been a financial audit on the Beeline. The fare boxes presently don't work, and there are all sorts of problems, and I appreciate Mr. Quintero bringing up the issue of the fuel. And actually, there is a private fuel vendor kitty-corner to the old fuel dump. And when you look at the cost of labor and getting these buses to LA, to Burbank, all over, it certainly would have been very interesting for the city to have entered into an agreement with the propane people across the street for fueling the buses. And relative to the excise taxes that they may pay, certainly those by filing a tax form back to the feds and the state, those excise taxes can come back. But I think, actually, the real issue, the real issue today is the fact that this contract expired the end of March, and it's just coming to the City Council now. And you're asked not only to extend it to the end of the fiscal year, but to add another year on it. And if you look at this particular report, that looks like it was prepared by someone who does not share the English language very well, and if you look at the mistypings, misspellings, and the questions to me are, are these figures accurate? For instance, here's a figure in here that says, therefore, the total cost of the contract amendment is $10,926,000, but you're only asking for $924,000. I know, I assume that everybody sitting on that dais has read this document. Now, certainly, we know that the City Attorney has, and Mr. Zern has, and Representative of the City Manager's Office, and certainly the Finance Director has read this, signed off on it, but apparently, nobody has really read it and looked at the numbers to share them with you. Now, if you're having all these breakdowns, and if you're having ADA compliance issues, maybe it's time to say, it's time to put this out on bid, let's bring in another contractor or several other contractors, let's put out a proposal, and not make this a 15-month deal, not, keep it for three months, bring in new people, and get rid of the problems that you have been suffering, and the city has been suffering. You're looking at the higher costs, you're looking at the, I understand MV Transportation saying, our fuelers have to spend more time. Well, obviously, they do, but if you had a contract with the Trans Propane Company across the street, maybe they wouldn't have that time. I'm Barry Allen for Vanguard, looking for accountability, hoping that you are too.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian.
Mr. Zern, could you tell us the difference between a CNG gas and propane gas?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, not being a chemist or a chemical engineer, I can tell you they are two completely different fuels, they're not intermingled, you cannot intermingle them, they are not co-fuels that you can burn in the same vehicle. They're two different types of fuels.
Also, they're prepared differently.
They're prepared, they're refined differently, they're transported differently, they're, they act at different temperatures.
Mr. Mayor, for myself, I'll be voting against this, not that I don't think that some of the items, you know, I have an issue with the money. My issue is with the 15 months extension. We have had issues with this company. It's not as much as what the company was before we dealt with this one company. The other one was much, much worse than this one was. But nevertheless, I am having difficulty dealing with an organization that has not provided, because I was here when we gave that contract out. And they were here, and they made all the promises, and I remember, that's the only bad thing I have, I have a good memory like an elephant, I remember what the promises they made. And I don't think they have fulfilled those promises. I don't have a problem with them having to get paid because they have to go somewhere else to get the gas and coming back, but they did promise us a lot about the maintenance and the quality of the maintenance, and where they're going to take care of it, and that's the issue that I have, and we have brought that up over and over and over again, and it just keeps on going. And I think the only way we're going to be taken seriously is to let them know we'll extend it for six months, that will give us enough time to send out there an RFP, and let them come back for a rebid, and let somebody else bid on it. But giving these guys another 15 months, that's another 15 months of headache that we have to deal with, these same people with the same problems. So that's where I stand on this.
Mr. Weaver.
I'd like to move 8A1 and 2.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, before I second it, I'm not particularly enamored with this company either. I'm not exactly sure that there are other operators out in the world that are going to be any better. And actually, the one prior to this company, I think, was a lot worse, so we've moved up. But, so I'm willing to, you know, go another 15 months, but I do think we need to have our RFPs ready to go, so that we can go out in the world and see who else is out there and who's going to make even more promises there at the, there at the dais. But I'm very happy about this new project, to go ahead and put it in the ground and get it going, because I think that's going to make a big difference. And then, I also think it's going to be a heck of a lot better, once we finally get our facility built, then I think whoever is the contractor is going to be working in an updated facility, I think our maintenance is going, maintenance problems are going to go way down. I mean, if you go to the shop that these people are currently operating on, it's pretty, it's pretty basic, so hopefully, we're going to get this taken care of fairly, fairly soon.
Mr. Drayman, second the motion.
Yes, thank you. I, I share the same concern, but I have a question, and that has to do with what are the industry standards in terms of failure rates and breakdown rates for bus services like this?
Well, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Drayman, in regards to what Mr. Yusefian said as well, there was a point in time where we were concerned about the level of maintenance of the vehicles. That was several years ago. We then went ahead and implemented an inspection program, that's with our own crews, my crews, who inspect these vehicles weekly. Not only that, the Mechanical Maintenance Administrator for the City of Glendale Public Works Department visits the facility daily to check on that facility. And we also, as a third follow-up, hire an outside firm that does a quarterly inspection for both mechanical, vehicle condition, record-keeping, in accordance with state law, and ADA. And those, all of those things have had our fleet running much, much better. And in fairness to everybody, we have an old fleet. Within the next four years, we're going to, we're going to bring 23 vehicles in, in a 35-vehicle fleet. So our fleet is relatively the same age, it's beginning to fail, and it runs hard. Bus fleets run hard, they are about the second hardest fleet we have after refuse trucks. And keeping those things together can sometimes be a task, but I am confident, and I have been confident the last two years with what MV has been doing mechanically. Mr. Espirito referred to a number of down vehicles or out vehicles, I have no way to confirm that right here and now. But believe me, with the amount of passengers that we carry, with the timelines that are expected, if that many breakdowns occurred that we weren't able to put something back into service to provide the services we advertise it, you all would have been hearing about it. I guarantee you, they would have been here tonight, you would have heard it in an email, and you would have heard it in the phone. You know, I think some of you gentlemen would hear it from the ridership anyway. We're carrying two and a half million passengers. But, Mr. Drayman, when we do the quarterly inspections, we utilize state standards and transportation standards for various componentry, whether it's federal standards for ADA, whether it's bit program standards by the State Department of Transportation, Cal, California Highway Patrol, we will use Department of, Federal Department of Transportation standards in our inspections. But our downtime has been consistent, our downtime, accident time, has been consistent with the standards of at least bus operators in this area, and certainly MV's a nationwide transit operator, and we've kept within their standards.
I just wanted to add, there is one other, the answer to one of the speakers is, I can speak for myself, and yes, I did read this quite carefully. As a matter of fact, one of the questions I had earlier was about the issue of fuel, and I did ask some questions about that. I understand that the City of Glendale pays for the fuel, that we pay for that. But my question is, why is it added in the summary as part of an explanation or a rationale for increased costs, labor rates, insurance, medical benefits, replacement parts, and then this sentence is added, "In addition, we have also experienced increases in the costs incurred directly by the city for fuel"?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Drayman, the fueling, when we, when we lost our facility, and the fueling went to Burbank, MV Transportation purchases that directly from Burbank, and then bills us back for it, so it then becomes a contract cost for them.
But it doesn't say that. It says fuel, not fueling.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Drayman, that includes the cost of the fuel.
I see.
The Burbank facility, since we don't have, when it was our facility on the Doran Street, we were purchasing that fuel directly from the gas company, we're essentially paying retail on Burbank, if you would go to a gas station. So it's fuel, fueling, the whole nine yards, and that, that cost is then paid for upfront by MV and charged back to the city.
Mr. Yusefian. You talked about all the inspections that we have done since, in the last three years. Who ends up paying for those?
The inspection costs are...
They come out of their original contract?
No, we have, within the contract, there is a certain percentage for third-party inspections. We took it upon ourselves as an added precautionary measure to do the quarterly inspections, because a lot of that had to do with ADA, if you recall. We wanted to make sure that...
I understand that, and that's part of, and I don't know exact amount what we spent on that, but as a contractor, when I contract a job, and if I don't do it properly, because the customer now has to go out there and hire another contractor to come and make sure that my plumber installed the toilet properly, make sure that the leaky valves are taken care of, and so on and so forth, I guarantee you, my customer will take that money out of my contract amount. And so that is the issue that I have had with this. I know we're doing this because we want to make sure that our customers are taken care of, but I think to an extent, the contractor is taking advantage of us, but not doing what they could have done, or absorbing the cost of what they should have provided us in the first place. If they'd done it right, we wouldn't have had to hire somebody else to go inspect their work again. Or if they are going to do that, then maybe they should absorb that cost as part of doing business. And that, that's some of the issues that you're not going to be able to deal with in this type of a scenario, you can probably deal with in a whole new, brand-new contract, and put those type of languages in the new contract, that if we have to go out there, you're going to have to absorb it, you're going to have to pay it. Because I can tell you, in construction business, when a contractor's told, if you mess up, you're going to pay for it, we make sure we don't mess up, because we know somebody else is going to charge us twice as much as what it would have cost us.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, I should add, and this is a pretty complex contract, so I may miss a few things, but we have in there not only the third-party inspection cost recovery, we also have liquidated damages or akin to that. inspection cost recovery, we also have liquidated damages or akin to that. So if in an inspection, we find a problem, we charge it back to them, in the form of a fine, a penalty. So not only the cost of what it is to fix it, but also the cost that we levy against them for whatever. We have a whole variety of issues that we have built-in liquidated damages. And I can tell you, we will levy those without question every month if it's necessary to get their attention. But we have that built into the contract, the ability for us to come back and level these charges back at them for not having done what we consider to be the right level of maintenance. And I can tell you, those charges have gone down quite a bit.
And there's no reflection of those charges being made up in here through this increasing cost?
Those aren't built into the cost of the contract. Those would be subtracted out as we made monthly payments to them, depending on what it was that we levied against them.
What I'm asking is, maybe put it to you differently. The contractor is not trying to make up for that amount in a different way you have checked?
We don't believe so, no. No.
Mr. Zern, I have a few questions. Can you address the fiscal impact? Because as I read it, I put my big pink question mark...
Yes.
...as to, is it the $10 million? Is it the, the other figure on the back?
Right.
7.179 million? Can you please tell us what, what is the impact for extending this 15-month?
Mr. Mayor, council members of the council, and this is where it's a bit confusing because of the, a different type of a way that we booked this for the accounting purposes. This, in our accounting system, is booked as a full five-year contract with the full-dollar amount. So the $22 million is what it's booked at. We budget, as you know, on an annual basis, although we do two-year budget. It still requires your approval each and every year. So we make a budget, and we have contingencies in that budget, and we come before you, and it's approved. Well, if there are some additional costs, fuel, it may be the need to make some ADA upgrades, our budget is sufficient to absorb that. However, the overall contract hasn't been amended, but because there's so, there's enough money in a five-year cumulative figure, it absorbs, it doesn't kick in an issue with the budget until you get to the end, obviously. And that's where it comes out. I don't personally think that's the right way we should do that, and I've had discussions with Mr. Allers, that despite the fact that the system may book it for its full five years, we'll treat it annually as if it was a one-year contract. And if there's a need for us to come back for an amendment to you that year, that's the year we'll come back to the amendment to you. So we don't get to the end of this with the three years, or, excuse me, the 3 million. So what you have is, we're asking essentially tonight for additional funds to cover the additional three months of this fiscal year, $924,000. We're also asking you to amend the contract, essentially issue a change order for $10 million. That $10 million includes the three-month, plus the 12-month extension, plus the cost overruns from the original five years, that while we covered it, we're not asking you for money, just that the contract has to be change-ordered up to account for it. We covered it with our budget at the time, because we had budgeted annually enough money to cover those costs. What we didn't do is amend the agreement each year, so that the end of the five years, it would reflect what the true cost was.
What is the...
Did I make that any more confusing?
I understand that. The report wasn't really clear on that, though.
Apologize for that.
What is the cost, if you've calculated it, cost per hour to operate one of our buses?
$54.88 per vehicle service hour.
Okay. And, and this is with union labors, with the Teamsters?
Correct.
And I know that, from my experience on the MTA, MTA rates are well over $100.
Correct.
110, 120. So in relation to the MTA, it's an efficient service. Would you say that?
Yes.
Now, is the, this is an off-term extension. We're asking for three months and then another year. Is that acceptable to MV?
Yes.
And why is it that we want 15 months? Is it that, and I say you're referencing our implementation of our short-range transit plan?
Mr. Mayor, the 15-month in general is to, we wanted to take the three additional months to get us on a true fiscal year basis, so that the contract would be on a fiscal year basis. And beyond that, the original, the 12 extra months that we're asking for are, there are a number of issues, as you know, in the mobility plan, and specifically, the short-range transit master plan, to make some revisions to the B-line system. Some of the high priorities are going to happen very, very quickly, including some of the things we talked about, like a specific brand commuter bus, and some of the other things, changing buses in neighborhoods and that kind of thing. We felt it might be best if we, if we retained some continuity with our contractors, we went through those initial changes, as spelled out in the mobility plan.
So changing operators mid-plan would be detrimental to the implementation?
Not impossible, Mr. Mayor, but certainly, we can, we feel that it would be a lot easier for us to implement those. And again, with a contractor who we felt, while there, you know, there certainly has been issues over the five years, we do believe that it's a much better contractor than we've had in the past. In fact, I, this is what I have done in the 20 years I've been here, this is the best contractor we've had during, during my time here. Do we need to continually monitor? Yes, for a number of reasons. We're providing a very essential service to the community, we have to be concerned about safety and accessibility and all of these things. So we are very diligent in that. But I think a contractor who has done a relatively good job, and I have confidence at least to carry us through this, this next 15-month period.
Questions? Mr. Yusefian.
Yes, and going back to the numbers again, and I'm reading this directly from the staff report. The proposed 15-month new contract amount is $7.179.276 million, which include a 5% contingency. Your motion is for $924,029.
Correct.
So, so the $7.179 million, it's not part of this $21 million contract that this council approved. Question is, where does this $7 million, I mean, it, it's, to an average person who looks at the motion, it's going to look like, oh, this is just the $900,000. And I, when I looked at it originally, I go, $900,000 overrun, eh, it's not that bad, you know, on a $21 million contract. But in reality, it's not $900,000. We're talking about almost an $8 million in here. This contract is going to be $8 million for 15 months. It's 7.17 plus another $924,000. That's what it is. So you are asking for us to approve your $924,000. So where are you paying the $7 million from? Did you get an approval from this council previously?
No, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Yusefian, that, the additional amount is for next fiscal year, and we included that in our budget, which you will review and ultimately approve. We went through the normal budget process. If, you know, that's still pending your approval.
Okay.
For '07, '08.
Okay. So...
Mr. Yusefian, Mr. Mayor...
Just got a clarification.
Well, not clarification, if I can just point out, and that's clearly stated in the staff report. In the summary section, it says, "The costs required for fiscal year 2007/8 are not being requested at this time, as this budget item will be included in the budget request for 2007/8, to be considered separately by the city council."
And, and I hate to tell you this, Mr. Starbuck, I don't understand what that means. It just says the costs are not included. There's nowhere in here that says what the cost is. And in here, in this section, does not say that the $7 million is included in 2007/8, so I have no way of figuring this out. All I see is 2007 and 8. I say, okay, so we're going to do that. And on this side, it says $7.179 million for this particular thing.
First, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Yusefian.
So maybe, maybe the staff report needs to be written a little bit better.
Steve will quickly do this. A mea culpa, this is, this is not a particularly well-written staff report. I think it could have been set out much better to show the flow of the dollars. What I was pointing out was, nobody was trying to keep from you the fact that we have a period this fiscal year to fund, and a, and then the balance of the dollars in next fiscal year that would be coming to you. So I think the process was pretty clear. This report could be much better written in terms of how they explain what period of time the respective dollars are, are related to.
Right, but, but the staff, but the motion has an issue. You want me to approve a motion for 15 months without a dollar amount attached to it. So if you want me to approve a motion that is going to deal with, it's almost you're putting the cart before the horse. You're telling me, approve the motion for 15-month extension, and then I'll come back to you for the money later. So what if I didn't want to spend the money later?
Mr. Starbuck.
Shouldn't they be all done at the same time, together?
If I can just point out, when you approved this multi-year contract originally with MV, you didn't appropriate all three years of the money. You appropriated the first year of the money, and then each budget year, you appropriate the next year's money.
I understand that, but we had a contract.
Well, we're recommending you extend the contract, so the same sort of principle applies. You're taking an action to approve, exercising the one-year option plus three months under the contract, and as a result, you have extended the three-year contract into what is a four-year and three-months contract, for which case, the last year of that contract will come to you in the upcoming fiscal year, just like the other years of the multi-year contract came to you.
Mr. Mayor, can I call for the question?
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. I'm not sure if your questions were answered, Mr. Yusefian, but...
My, my, my questions are answered, Mr. Mayor, but I still think there's, needs to be a better way of writing the report, so it makes it easier. And we, we are supposedly experts, we've dealt with this thing many times, and I could see how the public is going to read this thing and go, gee, what is this?
And Steve Zern and I will completely agree.
Point well taken.
Call for the question actually requires a second and a...
A second. Let's, let's take roll call.
Call for the question. This is for calling for the question.
Roll call and call for the question.
Can we just jump straight to the question?
No.
Even the call for the question takes you to the question?
No, call for the question, if there's a two-thirds, you need a two-thirds vote to cut, essentially to cut off debate.
I'll draw my second.
Unless they draw... I'm cutting it off myself and calling for the roll call on...
Everybody, if the second withdraws, the maker of the motion withdraws, and you're ready to vote on the main motion.
I'm ready to have the agenda item voted on.
Go.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Enthusiastically, yes. Thank you. The next item, please.
Next item is Director of Public Works, again, regarding revision of the refuse collection fees at APB1, is motion setting a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weaver?
Move AB1.
Motion and a second.
To set a hearing.
Any discussion, this is to set a hearing on the refuse rates. There's no discussion, let's take roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Is there any new business?
Yes.
You want to do a question?
Yes, I move that pursuant to Government Code Section 5495.1, the recommendation by the city manager to engage the professional services of Dan Waters as interim director of Glendale Water and Power for the City of Glendale is hereby approved. The city manager is authorized to execute on behalf of the city a temporary services agreement with Mr. Waters.
Motion and a second, any discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. Any other new business?
Yes. I move that the matter entitled Alberto Hueda versus Andrea Sarafin et al., Superior Court Case Number EC041240, be compromised and settled for the full and complete sum of $17,500, and the same is hereby approved and accepted, and the Director of Administrative Services is authorized to issue a warrant and set sum payable to Alberto Hueda and his attorneys Steinberg and Spencer for delivery by the city attorney upon the execution by the plaintiff of a dismissal with prejudice.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes. And that is it for the agenda items, and we will be adjourning...
In the memory of...
In the memory of the victims of the Virginia Tech shooting. Thank you.